What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session and today we're gonna do big blank effects. So. Check is good here. Right? I would fold here.
Close, I think I gotta defend this one versus low jack. Are they gonna want unfolding defending this?
I like folding here.
Yeah.
I think under the gun, under the gun one, we can get rid of that stuff.
Big two bar. So bottom then.
Okay.
Marginal defend. Oh.
Agree.
Yep, even three bets sometimes gets in there.
Yeah, we're tied to.
More than I thought, actually. I don't find this.
Hi Jack, guys, look at that. Queen eights, jack fours. But no jack fours, just green eights.
That two sizes for three bets? What am I looking after this?
Uh, it's like thirty-three and fifty-five percent, I think.
Yeah, what the hell?
Yeah, have you seen that before? No, Louie?
No.
Yeah.
How about you guys? You guys make sizes when you're three betting first time?
No.
Oh. No, I'm thinking check rates. Holy shit, yeah, I'm way out of line. I'm off. Yeah, I don't, uh. No, I don't make sizes here with three bets. This must be no. Just did you update anything?
Hmm, no. Just flashing in front of my eyes and I'm like, what, what is this?
Forty bags. Yeah, forty bucks. I'm still going four X at forty bags.
Alright, so we defend?
Sayonara.
Yeah. Overfold A side.
Cool.
Okay, yeah.
Queen is spade, defending?
When you're raising.
Could be. But yeah, I don't think so, because you don't have straight draws really, so. Yeah, alright.
Raising double barrel on a spade?
Fold.
Probably on the, on the break of call there.
I think six fives is slammed on five fours folding.
Calling three minutes sometimes.
Yeah, I'm calling.
Discuss the three bets on there too. Nope.
I used to kick off, I think, three bets.
You can't three bet because.
I mean, can.
That's you just said that.
Yeah, yeah.
Check.
Leave.
Beautiful lead here.
I'll leave to leave small.
So check, check. You wanna check?
Yep.
Check a leading small.
Call.
Raise.
I would raise.
Need to raise here.
He's gonna get all his buffs to fold. He doesn't have any aces in range. He's got maybe, I don't even think he's got kings, like whatever we raise, he's folding. Anything but maybe like.
Sure.
Queens, jacks, tens, everything's folding.
Sure, you're afraid that it's gonna fall.
But I wanted to keep bluffing. I'm not afraid he's gonna fold. I wanted to bluff.
How do you play for stacks if he has a king?
Sometimes you can't play for stacks.
Really?
It's a good ace.
He should see bet that range a hun- like ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, he should see bet that plot.
Good.
He checks.
Yeah.
So he's very weak, right?
Not necessarily. Could have like his worst aces.
Yeah, he could have a set of aces and some small pairs and maybe like, I don't know what.
Could have a six suited, a seven suited. And decide that he's gonna mix, the solver's gonna mix on those lots, not your bets. Although this board is probably betting a lot, right?
Ninety, over ninety percent, I'd say. Like, I, I don't even think there's a check. I don't thi- I think it's a range bet board, so like, I don't know what GTO wizard's gonna show us here, but it's a range bet board in my mind.
Yeah, but the thing is, I'm wondering like, how are we gonna play for stack if he has a king and we just called him?
Sometimes you can't.
What, what are you gonna do on the river again?
I don't like that answer.
I'm check call, I'm gonna check raise, check call, whatever, depending what.
Start to check raise now, so I'm gonna give it a shot. Yeah, it's time to check raise.
Yeah, you're right, but it'd be like the EVs are all saying.
What are you gonna do when the river again, if an, uh, jack or a ten comes? Then you gonna check too?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I'm gonna have to check bluff catch.
And, and then he's probably gonna think with ace nine, ace ten, ace jack, uh, he's gonna check.
Sometimes they're gonna check back. It's unfortunate.
Uh, I don't know.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
There you go.
So we check raised, right?
No. Yeah, we check raised, but I wanna go small though.
I guess we're block betting because we don't have the, we don't have the nuts and it's a board where he could just have like ace king, aces full, kings full, tens full.
I'm always doing.
King shakes.
So we might have gotten all the stacks if we didn't raise. We might have got all the chips in. Because now he's scared with his weakest king.
KTO prevails.
I disagree with Ken here a lot.
Well, check was the same, it wasn't terrible.
You stacked all the worst games?
Just fold this.
Yeah, it's a raise. Uh. We're not really raising a lot of eight X, yeah. I think we still bet small.
Oh, we three bet. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Uh, I think since we don't have the spade, we size up a little bit, but it's paired, so we might size down a little bit.
I liked the nine, I had a position, I still liked the ten big blinds.
I would have bet five, I think, here.
Airborne.
Ooh, okay, uh, he picked a, he, he picks up equity on a turn like this. I think the jig is up. It's time to front load some value.
Jam.
Go all in?
Uh, yeah. I was gonna say maybe fourteen, but jam's good.
All soon.
Back to pot one there.
Your mic's slow.
Um, I kinda like check raising this combo, I think. Maybe not, though. I, I don't know. We kind of interact really well with the four. We got, we beat all of his high cards. Maybe we do check raise at some frequency here.
I gotta raise.
Well, it's a marginal made hand. Lots of backdoor.
Yeah, that's kind of. So you wanna call?
How we, how we defend pair boards for the big buy and also we need equity denial seriously here.
I'm kind of in Ken's boat here a little bit.
I would do it with the upper danger. Yeah, five in our hand, five dudes, sure.
Would be a lot better, but we still have wheels. We have a diamonds, we have a.
You still got three straight. Yeah, you got three straight, three flush. That's still pretty strong.
Yeah, just once, but it's how, how healthy is it if you get raised, though? Right?
Yeah, not very healthy. But okay.
Oh. Yeah, we'll see a flop. Hmm, I, I'd probably play this check raise.
Yeah, so he's, I'd like to have an overcard here because he's got the all suit tens in range, uh, so it's gonna drive down our check raise frequency and we're open ended, which I think also. Drives it down a bit, honestly, because we're hands, we don't really want to necessarily. Get jammed on here.
Yeah, we just don't have the. Yeah.
I think it's supposed to be gonna call.
The small.
We just don't have the back. We just don't have the backdoor equity, so I, I kinda wanna lean on, um. Fold equity a little bit, but I'm, I'm sure calling's fine.
I think jack seven, jack nine raise more. I calls, uh, it does raise a good bit though. But I think when you bring in the jack, if it's like jack seven, jack nine, queen jack, all those are gonna raise a lot more, I think.
Uh, I think we gotta bluff. Five big lines? I don't know if you need to go that big.
Yeah, I'm thinking, I was thinking seven.
Yeah, thirteen, thirteen's completely reasonable.
Splints.
Uh, I would raise this.
Uh, yeah, I'm calling.
I'd check. This is just too weak.
Mm-hmm.
Ten three off, I think we'd raise some decent amount, but not to shoot it.
Stab? One big blind, maybe?
I don't know, man, we have equity.
Yeah, I don't hate it.
Yeah, back when?
I could check.
You got, I was about to say, you got ten high, my man.
On the back door.
I wanna check here. Or you could bet two.
Yeah, two. I guess you'd have to, you need to go bigger.
Is this a one and done when you bet two and then it's over?
Uh, it depends if a nine comes, if a spade comes, if a four comes. I think a jack, we could still go because we, we blocked nine, ten.
Um, abandoning ship.
Uh, I'm gonna go four, six, maybe sometime here?
Yeah, it's a paired board, so we still bet small.
Okay, good game.
Ah.
On.
Uh, at some frequency, it's gonna be high frequency call, I think, but you might have some jams here.
I'm pretty sure we jam in our charts.
If you go to the button, if you go to the button, Ken, it'll be like a much more prominent aggressive response with these little pairs. It kind of, it behaves a little bit more from the cutoff.
I wonder if four's jam here.
The big blind, probably two, three, yeah, two threes and fours.
Pop quiz, what do you do here?
I'm just calling here.
Raise.
I'm going.
But off, thirty-five big blinds.
Yeah, Jan, uh, Jan.
You don't three bet here.
Yeah, not from the big blind. I might do it a little bit more from the small blind. But I think I do, I do a lot of calling from here with this hand.
Also, I would call the suit and jam this one.
Why do you?
Well, just. Well, because we're gonna be, uh, completely toast if we get four bet. Like, I don't know how to play this versus a four bet.
Uh, this is, this is gonna have some jam elements, right? It's gonna want ace, queen, ace, jack and get this king queens jam sometimes.
What do you?
I wouldn't be surprised.
King jack.
King jack suited or offsuit?
King jack, king nine.
King jack. I might start, uh, you might start three betting those a little bit more because they're easier to fold versus aggression.
I'm ripping king jack a decent amount, too.
Ripping king jack off suitor king.
Sometimes, yeah, half the time.
King jack and king ten, I'm gonna call and I'm gonna start three bluffing from king nine down.
I agree, Pete.
King nine, Pete, that. Why, why king nine?
Uh. Because that's where you can start getting better kings to fold against the cutoff.
Alright.
It's also just easy to play versus a four bet when you're like thirty-five, forty deep.
Yeah, and starting at king nine and going down.
This is the solution with Shaq to see that this is never a three bet.
Yeah. I told you it was gonna rip.
So like, we're like king four, king five, queen four, queen five. From, from four to eight, or polar kind of.
Is it jam? And what's it doing from the small blind, Louis?
Huh?
What's it doing from the small blind? Is it playing more aggressively from the small blind? Yeah, see, this is what I would have expected. This is what I would have expected.
Yeah. Yeah. So I went with the tree bet, was not good. We get this, we call. And I'm just like, yeah.
You picked up equity, you got a heart. What are you gonna do? You've already got forty-five in the middle. You can't like. I think even like with the time that he has bricked hearts and the times that you like hit your jack, I think you still have to put the rest of your chips in at some point.
Uh, what's, uh, what size did you see bet? Uh, what size did you three bet, I mean? So here's a spot where I would go. I wouldn't go like four and a half or four. You started with like thirty-two bigs. That's where I go like three X.
Yeah, he went kind of big, Ken. I think he kind of made his bed when he got called on the flop.
Yeah.
So what size did you use? You went so fast again.
Mm-hmm.
I'm. So you went four, you went, you went four and a half. See that now you just like, you said, when you go this big, you're like, the SPR on the flop is like, you can't. What size did you see bet? Three bet? I missed it ten times. You go so fast. I'll see you might kind of. So would you go three and a half?
Almost four X.
That's four.
Four, yeah, I think, I like a little, I like a smaller three bet from the stack size. Then when you can see bet small and you have some enough chips to still blast turn. With some fold equity.
Yeah. Okay.
And how much did you bet on the flop?
Fifty-five percent.
Yeah, it was big.
You went big.
Yeah, I think it's big for the stack size.
Mike's a little high, bud.
Yeah, a little.
Sure, here.
Ouch. Yeah.
What size is GTO wizard use for a three bet when we're like thirty, thirty-five effective? They don't still go four X, do they? At thirty?
No, it goes lower.
Yeah.
It's two point two and then it goes eight point two.
Yeah. So it's almost four X, right? Eight point eight would be four X.
Yeah.
Uh, check.
That's a forty, right? So thirty, I think it's.
Nah, it was thirty-five.
Oh, that was thirty-five, okay.
Hey Joey, do you remember when your mic was like really low?
Yeah.
Well, now it's overperforming.
Um.
Yeah, Louis, being polite, I'm gonna lose my eardrums if you keep talking with a mic like that.
Maybe put, put it half, half will be good.
Is that better?
Not much. Alright, maybe just move it a little further away from the mouth, maybe.
Sorry, Joey.
We could even hear you shuffling around in your seat.
What do we do here? The seventh bear, we didn't leave.
It's.
Oh.
I think you call, man.
Nah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hmm.
Uh, we're done.
Do you go for a small lead? Do you bluff?
Yeah, you just target the auto folds, three point five.
I mean, if the eight pair, I think we could maybe don't, I don't have a queen.
One big blind.
It's smaller.
Wow. Okay.
Oh.
He's gonna bless us. We bet the one he raised and then we just, it's kind.
We just lose. Uh, this is probably a call, high frequency. I was thinking about like maybe pulling a three bet from this, but. I think it's a better call.
Check A probably a bit more.
Maybe so.
Unblock the bottom of the range.
Check raise?
Uh, yeah, you could check raise this at some frequency for sure. First the small, first the small bet and not having a spade would make me go larger more frequently.
Okay, yeah. Hmm, mixing size.
Still.
So called very much, right?
It's probably the paired aspect of it.
And then. See, with the jack of spade. We wanna have a spade kind of, but. Weird effect.
Yeah, looks, looks to be, right?
Yeah. Wanna raise a minus eight here.
Uh. He did raise. I was gonna say, there is some merit in checking is what I was thinking.
You're gonna check raise, check out B?
Oh.
Yeah.
Ken's getting triggered.
Why did you start doing that?
We check raise on flush or born, so if the, 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 the spade doesn't come. And if it's a break, I mean, what are we gonna do?
Well, you were.
Honestly, this is, this is like one of your weakest jack X.
Yeah, I mean, I see, I see it's the answer. Uh, I'll be, get it, start again.
No, it's all good.
So you're going for the double check raise? You're gonna fuck me over.
I think you probably just played check call.
Uh, I wanna raise now.
I would play call.
Do you go all in?
Hmm, no, I wanna raise.
You gotta go big.
SPR is pretty low.
Guys are stressing me out, man. I'm calling.
Okay, yeah, maybe just call is better. I think he has a better jack at this point. Because I wanted to get value before the draw breaks, but.
Alright, so we got a pretty marginal made hand now. Maybe check?
Yeah.
And are we bluff catching a big bet?
Yeah, we're never folding and this SPR top pair. Right?
I don't know, man. I feel like it's close versus a jam.
What do you mean? Ooh.
Yeah, they're, they're mixing.
What? Hang on, I, I don't understand here.
You probably wanna spade the call.
Yeah, well, it's because, it's because of the line we took. We played this check raise line.
It calls without a spade.
Yeah, how about that?
And seems like we are folding some some pairs.
So they're bluffing single spade combos. We wanna unblock those apparently.
So what? You say he's bluffing the nine of spade? Uh. Well. Are your opponents bluffing the nine of spade here?
They have it.
It's a good question, right?
Yeah. I don't know. I don't think blocking this place is that bad, but. Two.
I would be.
Aseus.
I'd be calling here a lot. Uh. Do you ever play raise here?
Well, we gotta check first.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you're obviously checking. We got an over, we got three to a straight on the bottom, three to a straight on the top. Like, you might check raise this sometimes.
Uh, definitely sometimes. Uh, the spade, you got the front door spades with the highest cards of spade. We got the wheel, we can make.
I see a lot of my written raising, but I think on Jack ten board, this is not the combos we're gonna pick.
You know why? It's nice because we got Broadway draws, wheel draws, spade draws and then over. This is a slam dunk for me.
Don't you prefer like ace nine here?
No, I mean, that's fine too, but I, this is better, I think.
That's raising almost always. Okay, well, we get, we get.
Yep. Oh, my God.
Going for it, the lot here.
It's out of line, man. I don't get this. Probably shouldn't be check raising this if I ain't betting when I hit my two.
Wow.
That's a pretty excited one.
So why would that make sense? Okay, so this is a break, so we just do it a lot on the news. Probably a lot of diamonds here. Do we do it with single diamonds? Uh-huh. Yeah, queen A, you have a diamond in your hand, you just can go bananas. Check raise queen A and barrel on a diamond turn. Okay. Okay. Can do it with king six off. And barrel on a turn diamond.
So.
It's a rainbow board. We can check raise with like any two options combo.
Can we see this way? Like, are we, how many of these ten X are we raising on the flop that are all checking now? Can't be much, right? Now, okay.
Alright. Fancy, fancy spot, blast. Oh. Now what are we gonna do?
We gotta call sixteen to win eighty, so I guess we gotta call.
I think you gotta call.
These dudes, you guys serious here?
Yes, you only gotta win like. Twenty percent of the time. We got outs.
Both first and outs to the river.
I would raise here.
This might be the top of my raising range with the all suit queens. I'd rather raise worse, worse, honestly.
Hmm.
I'm gonna check this, I think.
This is the top of my raised fold range.
Uh, versus small blind? I. Like queen six, queen five, queen, like the bar, your worst queens, queen two, queen three, you're gonna raise from the bottom up, a lot more here.
Yeah, you're right, Ken, like. He likes the.
Obviously.
Likes the trashy ones more.
Not sure why queen six never raises, honestly. Like, I don't understand that.
It just kind of in the middle.
And I feel like I'd rather raise that one more than queen seven in my mind. I don't know why it's different.
Well, I, I.
A function of their limping range, Ken. I don't know, like, you'd have to look at the limping range.
Like, all these change at every blind level or like every stack depth and I just can't remember all the. Different heuristics in each different range at forty than thirty. So I just kind of go like, if it's in the middle, I like to play it. More passive. The very top or very bottom I raise.
Alright.
It's a pretty bricky flop for him. I guess we gotta barrel.
Yeah, I like barely.
So quick question for you guys. You have a hand like king eight offsuit. Make it three point five, he makes it ten big blind. Do you call?
No, not with queen eight off.
Not with queen eight, not with king eight. What's your calling range for the ten big ones?
Well, I mean. It's gonna be, I don't know, like suited eights, nines or something.
Well, we're only raising. The top of our suited range, I think, right? Mostly. Oh, wait, I'm thinking big blind versus button. Yeah, I'm not sure.
This is the solution.
Offsuit nines.
So queen A, king A. King seven.
Yeah, I'm folding all that shit, to be honest. I'm folding AC. I'm folding AC.
Well. Like, in, in my view, I wouldn't even be raising them. They'd be more like middling. Like the queen eights, queen sevens. Jack eights, I'd just be checking them behind for the most part.
Yeah.
And, and like the twos and threes, I would be in there racing and to me, that's like. And, and like the twos and threes, I would be in there racing and to me that's like easy fold and then the top of my range. Is easy call.
Like, I like queen eight a little better than king eight just cause it can make it straight. Like, I don't really like the king eight and ace eight at all in that spot. They all suit nines and flying with, they're all feel pretty good.
So you're supposed to call with almost every suited stuff that you decide to raise.
Yeah. Something very well.
Except for the junk junk.
Roughly offsuit dates or offsuit. Okay, so now here we are, we raised a calls, we got the initiative. Now, 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 now.
I think, I mean, I feel like bet like four.
Small bet.
I think I, I might check this.
So he doesn't have twos and threes in range at all at this point suited. He's gonna have some stuff to wrap around it, but he's just gonna have a hard time versus a larger.
Yeah.
Just send the people to.
If, if you can convince me to bet with this, I would say it's a small bet.
Yeah, we have the equity advantage. We have the net advantage here, so we just press small. Two.
Okay, uh. Like when, when we think about our, 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 our raising range, we're gonna have queen deuce a lot. Queen three a lot, king deuce, king three, so we kinda smash this board. And then the, uh, the nines, I think we are limping. We're, we're checking back a little bit more, I think, right?
Yeah, but we also have, we have the top of range that wrap around the nine some and the over pairs.
Actually, nine X, nine X, we raise a lot, three flop, so we're mostly raised. So we're very heavy on deuce and trees and nine, so this is a great board for us actually somehow.
So just the range.
I think it's also like a, uh, function of your continuing equity, like the fact that you have a queen and a seven. And you have a diamond, like you can continue barreling on an eight, a jack, a ten, a diamond, a queen.
So, okay, do you start with a small one or a big one? Cause I, I'm. Thinking we might wanna polarize here. How do you bet at nine here? You're always gonna be big, right?
I would, so like, it's gonna be, he's gonna struggle with continues. If you over polarize your range here, you're kinda playing face up when he calls, like.
The one and done, no?
You could do it that way. I think I play small bet and, and look for double barrels.
I both are fine.
Yeah, you could, there's merit in both for sure. So I'd bet like two, and if we get a call there, like I'm barreling an eight, I'm barreling a ten, a jack.
Just great getting king high to fold for that small bet there, right? I like the larger size, but small is good.
Yeah, it's efficient, right? You call here for sure.
So what do you three bet here? As a bluff.
What was the stack depth?
Forty. Forty versus low jack.
Oh, some eight versus low jack?
Yeah.
Eight, eights and nines. Cause the bottom of his offsuit range is around ten.
You're in the neighborhood, Joey.
Yeah, and if you look at it, it's choosing queen nine, jack eight. Right, and the offsuit tens and nines.
Okay.
Right, there's two elements you can attack with the, attack the bottom of his range or the top of his value, and so. If you have a blocker like an eights, you can raise a lot. If you have a, a, a card that attacks the bottom of the range, like a nine or an eight. You can, uh, raise it a lot.
So check here and then fold. Or call.
Yeah, definitely folding versus a big bet.
What about if he bets one, you continue with kind of the dangler to the straight?
You got an overcard, man. It, I think it'd be close. I'd still fold not having any interaction with the suits.
Yeah, you start with ace three and king three though. Queen three is just gonna be too far down the chain.
Mm hmm.
You need the back doors.
Yeah.
And then. What do you three bet here? King jack off, ace enough, king queen off.
I just don't know if you do too much three betting from this position, like maybe some of your trashy ace X, like ace five off or something.
Yeah, I think like ace nine off, maybe.
I don't like king jack, I don't like king jack against under the gun.
It's more like king ten.
Yeah, cause.
The ten.
Queen ten.
The bottom of his range is jacks on all suit side. So you don't want king jack in there. Cause you're, you're raising a hand, you want him to fold.
He's opening up nine X, right, ace nine.
Oh, I think it boils down to like, you just don't really need, you don't need to bluff this range too much. Like. It's, it's E P, man, like you think they're like expanding their ranges for E P.
So I think what nice is about the ace and king blocker is like, I, I think part of it, LP used to say this a lot too, is when. When we don't three bet them and we just call, and then there's like an ace or king on the flop. And we got a shit kicker, we just don't ever know where we are, right?
It's true. There's some truth to that. You just have to, yeah, I mean, you have to be able to fold if you're getting a lot of heat at that point then, but. Yeah, I, I don't know, man. I just don't, I really don't bluff. Like in chippy V scenarios, like late in tournaments, sure. But, um. I, I would just donk this. That's a good double donk card.
I would check.
I'd go like.
Start generating bold equity.
Yeah, go small.
Very often when you dunk on these kind of boards, like small, small, small.
Uh, you call, call, call.
No, no, no. You gonna go? Gonna go with the flow?
Yeah, we have better flush draws to just call with.
Oh my goodness.
Uh, we're live, man. A four, a six, a seven.
A clop, a spade.
This is pure call.
Okay. What do you do with king seven suited?
I know king seven suit is the cheek, the cheat one, but I'm still calling. Well, like I said, I don't do a ton of three betting here, but like we were just looking at, it would, it would come from your offsuit tens, maybe some offsuit jacks.
Yeah, all two tens.
It's not gonna three bet a lot of suited stuff.
Maybe ace nine, ace eight.
Low frequency.
So because it's harder to attack the bottom of his range. You wanna be more blocker oriented, so it picks the king ten, the king jack, the ace ten and jack here.
I like the ten nine suited, nine eight suits are fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, I mean, those, you gotta remember, those are really low frequency, cause these are suited combos, right? So it's like.
But I always, I always find the ten nine, this is one I do like a hundred percent of the time if I ever wake up with it in that spot.
It's almost like all these you can combine into just one. I think I would pick the jack nine of those five.
You could, can, you could make your life easy, Joey, and simplify your strategy by doing that.
So then Joey, why the ten nine or like if you, nine eight would be a hundred per- a hundred percent better? If you use that a hundred percent because they're not opening off suit nine, so when you hit a nine, you're likely to be good a lot more often, whereas when you hit a jack, you can be in a lot of trouble. Versus their calling range, right?
So king ten off here is the hand to three.
Mm hmm, you unblock ace X, you get, you can target the weaker ones to fold.
Uh, you got a barrel. He checked, right? You're like kinda large, I think.
So like having.
Pot.
Having an ace is not great here, I don't think.
Yeah, but one check, check.
I mean, I am stabbing here. Um.
I would pot, so I think it's gonna go over, but I think it's gonna over bet. Although Ted, Ted's good for his rage, I think it's gonna go five.
I would go five. I think if it went check, check flop.
We have a. See, I don't think we get to do that a lot from the big blind on the turn.
You gotta gutter.
Yeah, so what?
But you also have ace high.
Draw that's gonna struggle, right?
This day size not beating any of his A size.
Yeah, I think it's right.
Being in the big blind. And facing a check, check is not a good enough reason to just lose your shit on the turn.
Oh, but I have a gutter, that's why I get to bet. And I have it over, like my ace might be good if he, he's gonna call king, queen here, king, jack, uh, you know. Shit like that, so where's, like if it goes, bet, call, check, check, we're gonna win some.
Ken, how do you, how do you think he's composing his check range from under the gun?
It's funny because I feel like Ken is right here because. He always comes up with betting gutters on the turn and whenever he does, it's right.
I always probe gutters.
I don't, I don't understand. I mean, I don't do that, but. So you get a gutter, so you, you're like, wh- what are the, the, the premises to that? You get check, check on the flood.
It's just a hard hand to win. You're not, you're not gonna like, it's so hard to just check call ahead of gutter. Now you're in a position where you're gonna have to probably call ace high on the river where you could just bet. Sometimes you make your hand, sometimes they fold, and even this thing can be good at showdowns.
Yeah, so what size would you go? Ken, let's see if it's right.
No.
Five.
I think it's check. It's gotta be check.
But what a little small, only be, I think because the ten's good for him. So, so I think if it was a four, if it was a four, we had it.
Just, just answer, answer this, Ken. What better aces are folding? If we blow up here, what better hand is folding?
Ace king.
Some ace kings might fold.
Ace jack.
It's thought that without spades are, like his clubs are folding a decent amount, I think.
He am not convinced.
Hey Louis, do me a favor, look and see what king seven's doing.
Yeah. To me, king seven is a better hand to bet than ace seven.
But you did see that, they bet a pretty high frequency, right? Wasn't it around fifty some percent?
Uh, it was thirty percent betting.
Thirty percent betting.
But that's a lot for me.
Okay, so it actually prefers the ace seven. I thought having an ace is not gonna be great here. Because we're kinda targeting, we're blocking some of what we would be targeting by. Barreling, but seems to be backwards.
I think it's a mergey bet because sometimes the ace when it goes to showdown, even like when we bet here and get called and it just goes to showdown. Ace high will win a decent portion of the time.
It's, but it will, Ken, also, it will win more often when you don't condense his range. When, when you check your ace, ace high is stronger.
Alright, pop quiz.
I like pop quizzes.
What do you do here?
Mostly call, sometimes three bet.
I'm small.
That is the correct, that is the correct answer.
Big blind, call, big blind, mostly call.
Hey, I'm calling.
Mostly call.
Against an early possession raise, I don't think you get to go crazy with pocket jacks.
Louis, we had this lesson when I played the venom, remember? This was like one of my key hands that I played. Oh my god.
You're tall. Oh, it says pure.
Pure raise.
It's a raising ninety five percent.
Oh wait, you're seven handed though too. I think, uh, I don't know.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, seven, I, I press all, I thought it was eight or nine.
Yeah, I thought eight handed as well.
We get this, what do we do?
You three bet?
Yeah.
Three bet, C bet.
Uh, check.
What?
I would, I would see that probably.
His range is all broad.
I like to check too.
Like a seat but small.
On this turn.
Check. Now you have to check.
Okay. Anywhere else?
I'm checking.
Ah, check, check, yeah.
Everyone is checking.
Yeah.
I'm also checking. That's not good. We need to bet this turn.
We gotta.
Lower E V.
We gotta bet this turn. It's a three bet.
I mean. Checking is competitive.
Hmm, I don't know. It's like.
I mean, it wants the bet, but like if we check flop, we're gonna get to check again.
So I went check, check, and now king on the river, what do you do?
Did you're smoked.
Yeah, this might, might be a little results oriented though, I mean. Did he, he, I guess you're right, you could have bet turn and got him off his kings, but.
Block bet.
Block is not good.
Uh, I know, I don't know, man, like, I mean, you can't check call.
Check.
Make it here with ace king, what do you do?
It depend, it de.
Go your card.
It depends on the sizing that he. Like if you check and he bets like eight. You might, I think a call might be in there.
GTA doesn't have that size in their range, honestly, though, like you shouldn't bet less than like fourteen.
So I have a couple of questions for you guys. What do you do with Jack ten? What do you do with clubs? What do you do with ace king? What do you do?
Call pre.
What do you do with pocket queens here?
Well, I mean, although, I mean, the value portions of those. I'm just gonna be blasting.
Okay, then you're busted flush draws.
Uh. See, man, the problem is Louis, I don't have a bunch of busted flush draws here.
And ace five of.
I'm, I'm never, never three betting ace five of clubs.
A silver special. You went first. You, you looked at it, it was like, oh, it's almost like two aces except at the five, and now here you are.
Here's the thing, I don't wanna lose forty big, I got a nice playable stack still, I don't know what point in the tournament you're in. I just don't wanna put this many chips off, honestly.
So you guys don't think that our range wants to go here, all the cookies?
The king's good for us, man, like it's a good card, it's just like his, it's a very contested card. So I think you're gonna get a polar response here. You're gonna have checks and big bets. And. Uh, I, I think jacks. The nature of jacks and his continuing range, I think we have a very marginal head. Yeah, dude, we're, we're, uh, we're cooked.
I'm just folding.
On the call, otherwise wouldn't bring the hand up.
Well, he brought it up because we made an error on the turn, so I'm not so sure he doesn't fold here.
You gotta be careful saying it's an error. It was higher E V and low frequency response.
So what do you guys think we should do in general?
Well, I mean, and if you are against a red tag in your database, green tag in my database. Um, I might start digging for calls. But if it's an unknown player that I'm not gonna give credit for just having a, uh, super wide range here. And finding bluffs on the river, I'm just gonna, I'm not gonna call this.
What about the suit? Do you wanna have a jack of clubs or not?
Oh, no.
Uh, I think a club would be. Would you want a club?
I think a club would be bad.
Now let's dig a little bit further. Let's think about the nature of this hand in particular. Is having a jack in our hand good?
Uh, it's not bad. Are blocking bluffs.
It's not, but you know, he should, he doesn't.
Having a jack here, Ken, is extremely bad.
Hold on, he doesn't have to bluff that many jack highs because they actually have some showdown value, right?
That's not what I'm saying, Ken. What I'm saying is, when you have two jacks in your hand here, you block Jack ten.
Yep.
You block.
Yeah, so like, think about it, think about his continues on the flop, Ken, like jack of hearts particularly having his back door, like. Jack king, for instance, Jack king of hearts is a continue, so you're blocking his continues on the flop, which is not good, cause that leans him towards value.
Yeah, I mean, we cut our range, so like, a good player will do this.
Or have that pocket jack.
Yep, I'm sorry.
Oh, I think pocket fives is a much more attractive combo to play bluff catcher here with. They're probably, they're probably similar E V, like jacks and fives are probably worth. Pretty close, if not fives being more valuable, because we give him more bluffs, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and five, fives actually block value too, right?
Yeah, I, I prefer to call with like a six of spades.
Wait, what, what happened?
Yeah, you can't leave everyone hanging.
Tune in, tune in Friday for the results.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no. By the way. So we all agree, it's a checker?
I would check here.
It's not a checker.
Well, so there's like, there's like four different trees you can go down here. Like what do you, when you say it's not a check here? Are you talking about like your barrel barrel line?
No, I'm talking about barrel, check, check, even though it's not a check. And then we're here, we're on the river with pocket jacks.
And it wants to bet.
We're betting again.
Yeah, the king is a key card for us, but.
How much? And pocket aces, uh, are busted flush draws.
Can we, uh, can we look at his range real quick? Like what is he calling? What's his calling range on the flop consist of at this point?
Not folding very much on the flop.
Okay, so he's got suited wheels, he's continuing with, he's got all these little pairs, some king nine, like I would be pretty skeptical versus the sizing you took. Uh, did you bet smaller? Did you bet big? I thought you bet big.
Bet small on the flop.
Small, you bet small? Okay. Yeah, I mean, maybe they do continue with some of this, most of this.
Yeah, so then take a look at his turn and see what he checks the turn with versus what he bets on the turn. Right? Like the function is that he's betting two thirds of his range on the turn. So the stuff that he continues with is ace high, which has showdown value. And not hands, pocket aces, pocket queens, right?
Yeah.
So when we get to the river, the hands that he's checked are monstrously good against us. Or are in really bad shape.
So I feel like these spots are much better when you're playing against higher level opponents who are probably executing some of the things that need to be executed to get to this point. Like if you're in a five dollar tournament, I feel like you're lighting money on fire if you're betting jacks here.
Yeah.
But if you're in like a five hundred dollar tournament or a one K, okay. Like this, this in a one K may be justifiable. This in a five dollar tournament, you just wasted five dollars.
We are super capped here. So like, I mean, he did put us to the test.
So many mistakes were made here. I should bet this darn. I should bet this river. I should not call this river.
Yeah, this guy is just gonna show you king high clubs a lot here.
Yeah, this is. And see like he's checking, okay, so like we're drawing this assumption that he doesn't have these type of hands in his check turn range. But obviously, obviously he does.
Well, the flower has some as well, right? So it didn't pure bet the, uh, queens did it.
Well, yeah, that's true, but in one breath, we're, we're calling like checking that turn a mistake, but in the other, other breath, we're saying, oh, well, he does have that when he's checking the same frequencies, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, it's a low frequency. I got what you said in the very beginning of that. It's a low frequency check. It's not a mistake. It's just low frequency.
Yeah.
Here we are, pocket jack against AP.
What did we do? We raised?
Three bet.
Yeah, look at that, look at the blinds, Joey. It's twenty in the middle.
I think that's a range continuation bet.
Yeah, I would agree, Joey.
Um, it's probably five.
SPR is gonna probably drive me towards five.
One, okay, okay.
Really? Two.
He's just got so many, he has so many aces and kings in his range, like a nightmare flop.
Yeah. Got a full.
Replay the hand and go.
He got us. Disgusted. I'm calling here.
Pure call.
Uh, check raise is an attractive option here, I think. Ooh. Just call.
Either, you can't.
Peter, Peter, look at that EV, man. One point four seven, not even close.
Alright.
Lead small? It's an ace.
Now maybe.
Alright, we have to bet now because he put the brakes on. Um, I think we could maybe even go bigger.
Now it's seven or two.
I think thirteen is good. I think he's got a call like a jack and maybe even some.
I'm kinda with Ken. If he's got pocket kings, queens.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I disagree.
Hands.
Let's do.
Do again.
Or.
Call the cookies.
The sizing of his flop bet there, he has a lot of pocket nines, pocket tens, right? And hands that are constructed around that, like nine, ten with the backdoor flush.
That's right.
He sometimes has hit the jack here, but often is just sitting here with pocket eights or pocket, or sorry, pocket nines. And so.
Right. Yeah, and he's like, I hate that turn card.
Yeah.
And that river card.
For that matter, yeah, that's right.
Alright, maybe he's gonna show you.
He's gonna set or two pair.
Are we getting scanned? Oh, we got scanned. Look at that expert level check.
That was fun.
So first off, this guy found the over bet with middle pair and the check when he hit two pair. Like what kinda, what kinda wizardry is this guy working with?
Yeah, what do you guys do here? Colorful.
I would call. Yeah, I, I was wondering about a raise.
Oh, can we lead with the top card pairing?
Frequency, but you can.
Five or, five or seven.
So what allows us to bluff here? The nine is paid?
Yeah.
That and you have nine high.
And the nine you built?
We have an incomplete draw and nine high.
He's a bit capped as well. The four is a little better for our range.
Yeah.
We can't bluff as much from the big line like you. I don't think it's good. It's just a check give up.
I'm going seven.
Seven or five.
Why would you, why would you ever go big? Why would you go big is my only question. Like why not?
I think you gotta go at least seven to get like pocket fives to fold, pocket. I mean, eights.
Uh, but we'll, we're, we need like ten eight to fold, um.
Yeah, he might not even be cold. He might not.
Queen ten, like we don't have to go too big to get over cards to fold.
Yeah, you're right. He might, he might even fold in like pocket eight, so. I think you're right.
Just fine.
Talk to me in the five.
Yikes, what if that's.
Actually, three.
Yeah, just target the auto folds.
What a mistake.
I always go for maximum fold equity.
Oh, I was gonna say, I was gonna say you could rip, but you clicked too quickly.
Oh yeah, you ripped here, Joe.
It's the only positive EV play.
What's attractive about ripping here?
Nothing.
This is not in my playbook at all.
We would have been called there, but.
Low frequency three bet, I think.
Oh, yeah. Wow, it gets in there. It's crazy.
Yeah, this is bottom of range. Like it's close to wanting to fold here.
It could go small, but I thought on nine eye boards, our range one of four rides with ace nine, king nine, pocket ten, pocket jack, and then pocket ten, we blocked. And then pocket queens as well, so it's like.
And have it a spade. It's a good percentage.
Oh, no, you said it. We have a spade so we can size down.
And we have, there's locked up equity on the board because eight, six has already flopped a straight, which is represented in our range, both in the suited side and the offsuit side, so.
We don't three bet eight, six suited, do we?
Oh, sorry, we three bet this one. Yeah.
So having a spade here drives down or drives up our big bets. I don't know. Ten of hearts is the one that seemed to be.
Yeah, when you have the queen of spades and ten of hearts, you block both continues, so you bet smaller.
Oh, you bet both.
All the rest of the spades that big.
Yeah.
Oh.
Call.
Call.
Okay, and what do you do with jack nine suited?
Call. Mostly call. Call. You call mostly everything suited. You could simplify your strategy and just say if it's suited, call.
Then I suited.
Suited to that you call.
Call.
I think these are all low frequency raises.
Ace ten suited, that's the start.
King ten off.
Kakal, kakal.
King ten ops a raise.
Oh my god, east ten suited, don't even raise.
And the jack nines, ten nines, queen nines.
That's what I said. You could simplify your strategy. Just play call all the way on the suited side.
Hmm. Okay. What kind of number do you rock from the big one?
Uh, what kind of number as in like?
Last rate.
Referring. My what?
Your last rate from the big line.
I have no idea, man. I've been honestly, I screwed my database up when I started importing multiple. Multiple GG accounts, so I'm unraveling that as we speak later today.
Just wanted to know if it's a good, successful strategy to flat so much against AP.
Gotta call one here, I guess. Yeah, it's against AP, man. Ace high board sucks. Two broadways on ace high boards versus AP like third, nines are folding, right? Like.
And Jonathan's book about, um, exploitations at lower levels, he, he mentions not having any three bet range against under the gun.
Oh, really?
Yeah, he said, he said that's a viable option to just have no three bet range against an early possession raise.
At all that or was there a stack depth mention? You don't remember, I guess?
I, I can't remember.
At the lower variance, I guess.
Yeah, low stake exploit.
Yeah.
I love the low stakes.
I love the Michael.
Yeah.
Check card or check rates?
Oh, yeah.
Simple check fold. Nine, four, interesting.
Yep. Suited.
Could leave this.
No, it's not connected enough.
I mean, I think we got a bluff, right?
Do you not have ever a single check it down? I'm giving up on your big blind range.
I do, but this one, I just, it goes, he checks twice. He's just so capped, man. I don't think, I just wanna blast. I wanna buff.
I don't, I don't think, I don't like this.
One big blind bluff. Look at this. You just can't give up. I mean, when it goes check, 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 check.
Target the auto folds.
Alright, pop quiz. Nine three suited.
Call.
Rip, rip.
Oh, you got a lead.
Do you?
You can.
Have to, but I would.
How much?
Yeah, this is a good lead. Small, for sure.
Got two, maybe.
I would play call probably if you're playing.
Yeah. If I check, I'm just calling. I'm not check raising here.
Why not?
I don't, if I didn't over to the ten with spades, like if I had jack three spades, fine.
Yeah, the four is very well represented in your range.
Yeah, I thought it was good.
Yeah, well, that's why I would have led.
Yeah, I think when you don't lead, you also have some check, check raises with the same, the same hands.
I just don't think we have enough equity with this hand and only one card to go.
Can't fold now.
And this is the problem, okay? So you check raise this with one card to go and now you've put yourself like in a horrible situation. Do you fold a flush draw having committed however many big blinds or do you call off with potentially zero equity?
You fold because when he's running it, he might have the same, he might have the same flush draw, right?
Well, that makes, that makes, if you're folding this after you check raise it, it makes it like infinitely worse.
No, I mean, it was just a bluff.
Why would you choose one with equity if it's just a bluff and not use like hearts then?
Well, first, the turn rate, right? How good is the turn rate? Not great, not great at all.
Yeah, the, the turn you wanna lead.
Clubs. Okay, so do we have, is there a turn, is that a turn we wanna leave? Definitely.
Uh huh.
Definitely. So I missed that, but then I saw it too late. And then I wanted to compensate instead of leading, I turned the check rate. You know, some days you just compound mistakes, right? So.
So the last question is, if you check raise it and he raises, do you call off or do you fold with the, the flush draw?
You're folding.
Uh, there's, no, you have an all inside there. So something's wrong.
Yeah, he, he checked.
Nine eighteen, we can still stuff.
No, he went all in.
He jammed on you.
But we look at whether or not, like, oh, if he jams on the turn, you mean?
Yeah, that's what.
Yeah, it's clear fold. He jams.
I was looking at the click. If, if we fold to the click, we fold to the jam.
Well, he, yeah, he didn't click it though. Alright, I see, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I think what, I think what Kenny Galen said about the check raise, if you had an over, it would be better to check raise.
That was nice. Jack three, does Jack three check raise more?
I think you're right, Ken.
You guys see the over? This guy's crazier than me.
He's out, he is so far out of line. It's not even funny. Is this a micros? Micros?
Oh my goodness, you, you don't wanna know the buy in here. Who, who knows what that could be? Could be the two hundreds.
Look what Jack, look what an over does with the spade there. If it does it more with jack three, for instance, does it check raise more on the turn? Probably just wants to lead still, right?
But yeah, no, no, no. It wants to raise more with an over for sure.
Once you have an over, the frequency's driven up, yeah, it makes.
Yeah, and the queen three gets more, king three more and ace three is almost pure.
But those ones call, right? Like the jacks and the queens still get kings and aces to fold.
Oh, yeah.
Ace of the king just wants to showdown.
Yeah.
And then.
You could cooler or worse flush when you have the ace or the king.
Oh, it's funny because eight tree plays very differently than eight nine. The nine tree, I mean. But okay, okay. Alright, who's up?
Alright, handed now, so we're gonna call.
Rebet?
Oh my god.
I don't know why you're calling. You guys are calling with jacks, but.
I gotta look at you. I gotta.
I, I think that, I think our poker coaching charts have calling near frequent.
So Louis, I think it's more of a call when you're a little deeper stack. Like if you go to like sixty or something, I think it becomes way more of a call. I think at forty, it's just like.
Yeah, the nuts.
It's, it's like whatever, you know, like it's, you gotta raise it.
What do we bet here? Small or big? So it's like queen low, low. So it's like, I think it's gonna be a bet small type of spot.
I would bet small if, uh, yeah, I would bet small.
Yeah, one Broadway.
It's a pure call at eighty, fifty, fifty at sixty and pure raise at forty.
Okay, so yeah.
Now what?
Um, maybe continue small? Ish?
Why about fifteen?
We three bet, right? Oh, we three bet, right?
Yeah.
I think small.
I like fifteen and call a jam.
That's all the cookies.
I almost said that, but I'm like, we're only gonna get called with by a queen, right? I almost said that, but I'm like, we're already gonna get called by a queen, right? Only better.
Not necessarily. Ace, king.
What does it have? What I said?
Well, I don't think flush draws get the call off to that pot sized bet, do they?
You don't think?
They have the, they get indirect odds.
So it's gonna be calling wider than you think, Ken. I'm pretty sure.
Cause we're bluffing some flush draws with this too, right? Like we're here with ace high hearts and stuffing or king high hearts and stuffing.
I'm clearly seeing that it's a jam. I just didn't think they would flush draws off. I'm folding flush draws myself. Maybe if I have two overs and a flush draw, possibly.
I just confirmed what Galen said about jacks, um, and it's true. At forty and under, you're three bet. Under the gun at sixty and over, it's less clear to three bet.
Fifty fifty, eighty is a hundred percent call. I just looked them up.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, this is a good three bet hand, Louis.
Oh, yeah, you like it? It's considered?
I like this one.
Don't love the flop.
I think he still bet, man.
Small, right?
Hearts. I would go small. It's either check or s- check or small.
This is a big bet. What do you mean small? What do you do with ace seven?
Uh, but don't, we bet big from the bottom pairs up here.
You know what? I guess bucket base can bet small, bucket king can bet small, so we bet the small. I think check.
This, yeah, it's a decent flop for his range, honestly. I mean, we're just not gonna check, but.
Yeah, low boards, we don't check at all, I think, in three bet pots in this scenario. Oh, really? Okay. I think we have some checking from the small blind, but from low boards in this scenario, we don't have a checking range. Oh, okay, so it's more the middling. Yeah. Jack tens and nines where you will check more. Even even the jacks are like, there's just like, it takes like two broadways almost. We looked at that the other day, no?
They polarize more on like the jack ten, jack nine, ten, nine boards, right?
Jig is up, check.
Maybe it's not up yet, Pete.
Call. Good boy.
Maybe party some.
And check.
Jig is up.
Not necessarily. Now, it might be now, but we could call as well.
I think we want to call here a lot.
We can call because it's our best ASI. This guy's full of it. It's a bad thought. It doesn't connect with this three bet calling range.
Okay, so I want to pause for one second. A hand ago, when we were looking at the flush draw calling at the very same frequency, we were saying it's a fold and it's a mistake. Now, we're looking at ace, king here, same frequency. Now we're saying it's a call.
No, no, I'm just saying, I could take a clear fold, right? But if if you ever have a combo to make a fancy call with, then this is the one. What does he have? Look at him.
All right, so I'll keep, I'll keep the nine three of spades in my back pocket as a fancy call versus jam. Call.
Uh, we could raise this, right? Versus middle position.
Not really.
It's too good. We're gonna want to raise from the eight, the eighth area here.
Uh, he's, he's not opening off suit eights or nines, right? So I think this is kind of like the bottom.
You're gonna torture equity when you get four, you're gonna torture equity when you get four bet jammed on.
Now, hijack.
You did sevens offsuit tens.
Yeah, offsuit tens.
You're gonna want to raise with nines and eights here.
Yeah.
From the suited side. All right.
We could lead, we could lead.
Yeah, you could.
Wow, not this double, right? We need a six, a seven, a five, an eight, maybe.
You probably want to lead without the equity of spades or hearts here.
Probably blocking the queen is also not great.
Little spades.
Or not the heavy lead board anyway, just.
Not, not leading.
This hand's just gonna give up.
Yep, I agree.
Never gonna give you.
Never gonna win the pot. Call this bet.
Do we ever raise fold?
If you, if you're gonna find a fold with the student side, this is the.
There you go, Ken.
Are you talking about folding, Pete?
I am, I am, I'm condoning a fold here. I admit it. I am knitting it up. Seven deuce, eight, three, eight deuce.
So these are the ones that do find some of the bluffs, these like really shitty two X and three X.
The twos and threes find some of the buffs, but I think it might be.
Yeah, there it is.
Well, Pete, I mean, if you're gonna make some tight adjustments, I don't think these are bad combos to do.
Okay, okay.
There we go.
Look like, wow.
We must have flopped something good. I walked away.
But he checked.
Oh, six.
Do we check because of the SPR is one?
Nope. We can still get called by better, worse hands.
Yeah, and then he has a nine, nine or higher spade. We don't want him to get there for free. So.
But he also, he raised, so he's got aces.
I wasn't, I'm under the impression that whenever the flush completes like this, a lot of our rings wanted that small.
Yep.
So it's gonna be small, right?
Yeah, I think.
I would bet big.
It's small.
Is it small?
Ninety seven.
Okay.
All right, blessed it.
Now, put them in. Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Oh, happy days.
Hey, look at that. You won the pot.
We won a hand of poker. We want a stack. We don't usually get the stack off the computer here.
Uh, this is a good lead. This is a good lead. You could check it too, though. I'm all in. Uh, do you click or jam?
I would just call and leave turn.
No, 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 no. You're deep enough to go to twenty five here.
Yeah, I kind of want to jam, I think.
I would call. I know it feels weird, but this is, cause say a nice turn comes, we're gonna give up, right? We're gonna, not gonna give up, but we're not gonna leave. But if it's like a low. Like here, we open the machine, right? And then he's playing with us. Now, if we click it back, I think he just get off for free. Whereas when we call and then we do it again, it's like we reopen the door after.
And you're just isolating yourself first value, but.
SPR is gonna be less than one when we call two. And I'm dunking again here. Nah. Nah, it's not a thing. Okay, you guys want to check or jam? I like check. Let him continue.
If you play call, checking is definitely the way to go.
Now I'm going full scam. No, go lower.
I'm all in, nah. I'm definitely all in here.
I thought when he caps his range, we don't want to go too large.
How capped is he? He's got top pair.
He luck boxed into top pair.
I really love box, you got two pair.
Yeah.
Oh, call, 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 call.
Do we raise eight, do we start raising eight some, like three bet, eight to nine some?
Not for, not for under the gun, you crazy.
What do you do here with king, jack offsuit?
Okay, maybe, maybe some low frequency three bets.
I'm calling it king. Not from king jack, not from king jack.
Ninety percent call.
I prefer to, I prefer to three bet king ten.
So yeah, the eight start raising, okay.
So we get rid of this now and this, and we get, we find more this and more ace nine up. And more queen ten.
Oh my god, if he bet any bigger, I would have folded.
Yeah, you call against that size.
Yeah, call against a small size.
I don't know. Like if he goes like a third, I could fold.
Lead?
You could just guess, you can lead.
Want to lead here?
No.
We get the lead on a sideboards?
Hold on, hold on, LP, we don't have all suit threes versus under the gun. Under the gun one, we're there, like, we don't have king three even, so it's not a good lead.
We got a bunch of suited ones, no? We have all the suited threes.
Not enough.
It may be okay, man, but I like playing check here.
Yeah, against an ace high board, I like to check.
It's, yeah, it's also okay because like the three is a rainbow, so it didn't drive any equity for him.
One big blind.
One second, quickly, I just want to see if it's like ace nine five. And then the five comes on the turn.
We don't even have king five off versus under the gun.
Well, Louis, I think. Our hand is one, we might have leads, but our hand is one of the hands that want to check. You see all those middle pairs there? They're just clearly checking. Okay, yeah, the five would drive up the frequency, but as Joey said, other pairs are checking.
If if we get a six on the river, we can overbet, right? By a lot of aces.
Is it pure check on the river? Do we, do we have a block?
Here.
Okay.
Nice and a king's EP.
Yeah, we're done.
Yeah, but the king, the king's a card that he's supposed to bet, so it'll activate all his bluffs again.
We can't do nothing bad. He's just got two, she's too hot, he's got too many aces and too many kings.
Yeah, but, uh.
We got scan.
That's scam. He doesn't bet those kings on the flop so much, though.
Oh, my word.
Is this a small frequency three bet?
I think so. I call, honestly.
Roll the dice. Ten or lower, three bet.
Yeah, twenty five.
Alright, so twenty five, we call.
Fold. It's ace four and ace five, not ace three. Oh, okay. It's even. Just ace five. Just ace five, yeah. Suited tens here. I, I thought it was somewhere from that corner of the graph. I suited nine, I mean. Well, suited nines and all suit tens are always against the under gun range.
Can we check out a position? And fold.
This might be in that portion that does some small.
Uh, versus, versus steals maybe, or maybe just a small blind, but not versus, uh, early position.
But what are our three bets are? Low jack.
King eight.
Two nine, jack nine. The nines. The suited nines. Offsuit tens.
Yeah, Ben, so like the ace lines in there again, probably.
A middle ace somewhere, ace six, ace five, ace seven.
I'm not betting any suited combos here, really.
Suited nines, suited eights.
I thought king eight might, let's do, jack eight.
Offsuit tens and offsuit nine. I think king eight is just too, too good against the low jack range. We use the jack against under the gun, but not against under the gun one or low jack.
Yeah, we want to start keeping in their worst things when we have king, jack and king, queen here.
No one wants to check raise here.
Easy fold.
Easy fold.
The ten interacts with the jack and the seven. It's a high low. We got the backdoor flush.
Not talking.
You don't have an over.
Okay, so queen four, queen four would be one, right?
Queen four would be a much better, better combo, Louis.
East four.
Queen four spades mainly, I would say.
Just too weak.
I even too weak.
All the same, any backdoor, okay.
Right, if you, if you want, like, you're gonna want connection between the jack and the seven, so you have nine, ten, eight, nine, right? Ten, eight, all of those can find check raises.
So bottom of my calling range with the all suit connected.
By the way, a lot of what we did today, I think Peter does a lot of that. I think on Mondays, Pete?
Yeah, uh, Monday evenings at eight thirty at night, we do a lot of, uh, single spot range work. We'll, we'll be working through the big blind against the mid position next week and then early position the week after that. Wrap up the year.
Yeah. So I call. Now we check for.
Seems good. So like, if you wanted to raise, this feels like a combo you might be able to get out of line with.
I really don't know what you're talking about. Wait, who said they're folding?
I did. The bottom of my range versus hijack, I think. So it's probably, I, this might mix calls and folds.
This is insane if you're folding this combo.
No, this, it's a call, but it's not a bluff. Right? I would bluff queen ten.
It's, it's versus button cutoff, I think you bluff it, right?
Queen. No, no, no queen ten against hijack. Why not? Queen ten off, for sure, no? That's the bottom of his offsuit range. What are our blessings? Um, some suited nines.
This is gonna fall some. This is a, this isn't a great hand in this spot.
Suited eights. Queen eight, oh, yeah, we have.
Hey, looky there.
Yeah, but I thought it was more like offsuit tens and offsuit nine. Offsuit nines and.
If you look at the nines, I mean, it's really around the nines.
Offsuit nine, suited eights. Yeah. Okay, and then two sizes here again. Did you ever see that?
Not really, man. I always use one size.
Yeah, I think implementing a two sized raise strategy is a much more advanced con- uh, concept here.
But we could do it.
These are a bit different than our ranges that, that.
This right here, this is much easier to play for me than like queen ten suited or something. Like we were advocating raising earlier. Like I, I'm much.
You don't three bet queen ten, you, you drew that queen nine suited, queen eight.
Queen nine even. I would much rather three bet this than queen nine.
Yeah, Louis, the way I always think of it is I always think with the bottom of the offsuit ranges, and I want to go like one or two pips below that. Okay.
For what it's worth, in our ranges, queen seven off folds like sixty percent of the time and never three bets. So ranges are a bit different.
Call.
Oh.
Oh, here we go.
I would go three point five. I would bet small.
I want to check.
Okay.
I like a small bet. I'd say that's small.
This particular combo blocks the continuations from both spades and hearts, so it's gonna. This particular combo blocks the continuations from both spades and hearts, so it's gonna want to pick the small bet size to belong, to block, it's bad. And you can polarize turn, or you can check here if you want.
But that's a pattern you see over and over, Pete, when you block both suits and the front door flush and the backdoor flush, you're gonna bet small more?
Yep.
Well, plus on this board. Ace hot, ace high paired board, I think we want to go small with our range.
Do we size up? Do we bet smaller again?
I think this term polarizes, so you're gonna have checks and like maybe like mixes between nines and sixes?
The way I see this, there's two ways to go about this, if we pick up a spade, we barrel because we're kind of leveraging our spade equity. That, that would be a small bet, our hand wants to get value from worse, we can bet small. But this end class wants to check it out, no?
I think it's gonna be like, I'm checking at large, so I'm checking this exact ten.
Okay, it's a.
I don't think it's giving up, it's just pot controlling with the check.
Oh no, it's a check, alright.
So, yeah, I think, like, our hand particularly, um, isn't as vulnerable, right, as if we had pocket sixes, where we're much more vulnerable, so.
Check. I'm betting like ten here.
I'm checking.
No, never, never checking.
He's got worse aces, he's gonna, nah, he's gonna have a lot, he's gonna have worse aces in range. And versus the three bet, he doesn't have a lot of pocket pairs.
Ken, when he goes check, check, turn. It went check, check, turn, you think he's playing check, check, check with an ace here?
Don't, well, I don't know.
He could check, check turn, but he's not checking the river after that.
Exactly, exactly.
I'm just questioning how big we can bet because his, his range doesn't seem to be. I want to go ten, but I, I'm afraid that's a little too large.
The seven.
I would go, I would go ten, I think.
Oh, seven, seven or ten.
I'm in that.
Wow, it's because you don't realize that he doesn't check back any aces.
Happy days.
Happy days what?
I'm calling.
Does he check back threes?
We're gonna see.
Oh my god.
Surprising.
So, good luck, son.
Welcome, welcome to the Thunderdome, Ken.
Yeah.
Is that the guy who showed you the ace six bluff earlier, Louis?
That's him, he has a mark, I have to look, I have to. Break the rules a little bit for him.
Louis, I know you guys really want to three bet this, but I'm calling.
No, no, this isn't a three bet against button.
What do you mean, we really want to three bet this?
It's too good, it's too.
Who are you trying to induce?
It's not quite good enough for value.
No one here is betting this.
It's not gonna, it's quite good enough for value and it's not bad enough for a bluff.
Alright, okay.
Ace nine off. King.
Sure, sure.
King six, king six suited, king five.
Five, king, king five off, king six off, king seven off.
Yeah.
All suited.
Queen five off, queen six off, queen seven off.
Easy, easy, that's right, yeah, all those are good. Jack four off.
No, these.
And then your middleing.
King five, king six, king seven.
Jack five, excuse me.
Seven, ace ten, ace nine.
Jack seven.
Oh, I guess against the, the button, all the suited hands are too strong to bluff.
Exactly.
Very polar.
I had the right ranks, right ranks, wrong colors.
Yeah, you just want to play your suited hands against his unsuited.
That's a good way of thinking about it, Pete. I do check raise here.
I like it.
Is this one too strong?
Too strong, middle of the deck, no benefit in raising.
I don't think.
This is not queen four.
Yeah, you got a gut shot, you got a flush draw.
So it would be too strong, if you were open ended, it would be too strong, but with the gutter, it makes it weak enough to want to raise.
Dude, I'd probably even raise the open ender, man. Like, what's jack nine doing? Jack nine of spades, look at jack nine of spades, it's even raising. The suited one.
Yeah, I look at the nine, seven, nine, seven. Yeah, and then the offsuit's hardly ever done it, so those combos raised less frequently.
So this here, you want more straight interaction than a high-low combo.
Well, the high-low combos aren't bad either, it's just the nature of the board is like centralized around the middle of the deck, like ten eight, it's not like there's a bunch of low cards here. I mean.
Small.
I guess you gotta target his folds, like bet three point five or something.
Middle of the deck, we don't do it.
I like three point five.
Maybe, no, you go big.
You can still get some king high to fold that beats you.
Yeah, he has so many, he has all the offsuit ace, like you're getting, just by getting ace high to fold, it's a ton of combos, right? Cause he just has them all. And almost all the king high combos.
Okay, so the ten pairs, he doesn't have that many, so it's really an eighth or nothing, right?
So his ace highs, he's got all the offsuit aces, he's got all the offsuit aces, he's got almost all the offsuit kings. He's got almost all the suited kings, so that's a lot of combos to target.
But even there, like, he calls us with a spade and a jack in his hand, which are both bad, right, blocks a lot of our bluffs.
This is too crappy, this is like too far down, I think we play call here a lot.
Pop, pop quiz.
Pop quiz, let's go.
I like this new feature.
I do too. So you play call, which seems good, uh, I would raise, get it in here, man, he's sub thirty, so it's like, you got, you got the nuts.
I think it's a call, cause we have, we want to raise our better queens, this is one of our worst queens versus, uh, he's not EP, he's low jack, but still, it's like a middling. I guess it'll raise some, but not pure.
He's like twenty, he's like twenty effective, man, I, I'm, I'm just betting it in here, I'm gonna bet like either half pot or jam here.
I, I like call on the flop.
Yeah, I mean, this hand I would call more, I would raise my better queens, obviously.
I agree.
Alright, you nits, let's, we're gonna take a look at this.
This, this is going to raise, but it's gonna be a bunch, it's gonna be when it starts to reduce frequency.
I'm not doing it to be nitty, but it's a lower SPR, you don't have to.
That's true.
Be advanced fast.
Uh, Joey, okay, we add two pair, you'd be right, for our set, you'd be right. But when it comes to top pair, at this kind of SPR, we go crazy every time, every, like, I would raise your queen seven.
What I was saying is you don't have to worry about, it'll go in on the river.
Yeah, I would raise very liberally here.
Yes, bro, isn't that low, it's five.
So, it's not necessarily a function of SPR, it's stacked up, he's sub thirty big blinds, so it's a game of top pairs. You're probably gonna be playing very heavy raise. I know we, we use those interchangeably sometimes, like SPR, top, and like stacked up, but it's really stacked.
It's your better queens, I think it's your king, yeah, it's your king queen, uh, queen jacks of the world, I think. Maybe queen ten, queen nine's gonna start reducing a lot, I think.
So, are we in the, we're the big blind, correct? Yes.
Versus hijack.
Hijack first big blind.
Have to do it manually.
Um, yeah, old school.
I, I'm lost, I don't know.
Let's go.
Is that how it works? It's been so easy recently.
It's only gonna get easier. Wasn't it two tone?
It was queen eight, the exact same two.
Okay, gotcha.
Rainbow.
Yeah. He bets one, one seventy.
He bets small.
Point nine. And then look at.
Hey, look at, look at your queens, look at all your queens, except for two pair, look at all your queens.
Okay, I said queen seven, but it's like. Jesus.
Your word, your absolute stone nut low ones are like, okay, calling.
You don't even have a calling range with this queen. So, okay, okay.
And that's at twenty-five, I think that's, yeah, that's about right.
And then the question is here.
You got the nine of clubs, man, you got like one of the best blockers here, like, I'm not concerned about him having ten nine or. I like this bet, this is, I like this bet a lot, actually.
I would've went smaller.
Yeah, just put it in. Good game.
I lose all your chips no matter what, but I still think it's a smaller.
Okay, let's try queen six now, call.
What size is a silver bet on a turn?
It's a good question.
Probably half, half the player's chips that are remaining, it usually is the tipping point of pot committed. So.
Small or all in, right?
Jack of clubs.
I would usually bet half of the players remaining chips here.
Either way, can suit yourself, if you don't have a spade, you can go bigger, I think. Now, queen of diamonds wants to go bigger.
Smaller, larger, the middling size is kind of like, uh, whatever.
Okay. So here we check, I have that queen of spades, it's a pair of board.
It's a fold, I think.
You wanna fold?
Call the queen here, if I, I mean, I can't fold a queen yet, it might be, but I can't fold it.
Okay, so I'm raising here every time.
We don't have that many.
You don't have an overcard, you don't have interaction with the two, you do have a spade.
I don't need that, we've got a spade, high spade, happy days, blocker to the king, what else?
Alright, will you? I'm clicking fold here.
I guess the cuff from a button, I would do that, but not against hijack.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Ouch, you got me, it hurts.
Queen of spade, it's easy. Uh-oh, queen of spade.
That's an easy card, you bet now, that's small, small.
Oh, it's.
Nope.
I was gonna say.
You go big, 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 big.
Oh, I guess the deuce, the pair deuce doesn't matter, cause it's not in range, really. For the hijack.
Man, this may turn into a bluff, low, low frequency, but I think it's a call more.
I think it is the six, I think the seven for some reason is the one that sits out, I think it's like the nine, eight.
The six, the six is usually the one that sits out, the six they don't usually like, but.
You can raise.
Check, I play check call with this combo, I think. I'm just calling.
Yep.
Disconnect to the board.
Still playing check call.
And, take check on the turn, we're pretty high in our value, I would go with eight.
I want to go greedier, I think ten maybe.
I don't know, that's a lot.
About nineteen.
Nineteen.
Well, no draws came in, so.
You guys are greedy, greedy, greedy.
Draws come in for us, Joey.
Greedy gobblers.
Yeah, but look at the, it's, it's the fact that it's got a nine, a seven, a six, like, it's, it's just really good for a calling range. And our hand is like disguisingly strong, I think.
Also, when you block him having, like, when the six comes and you hit your second pair. It blocks him having pocket sixes as a set there, and so it chooses the bigger sizing, blocking the, the rivered set.
Check fold.
Yeah, this is a good check fold.
It's a good check fold.
Alright, pop quiz.
Let's go, pop quiz.
Do you ever notice Louis really quick clicking the buttons when we're betting, but he takes a long ass time to fold?
I notice that every day.
Hold up, but to that.
Oh my goodness, Joey.
Hey, let's do a, let's do a raise here, I just kinda want to jam here, I think sometimes.
Okay.
All in.
All in, right?
Yep, I'm a, I'm a jam here.
He's got, he's got twenty big blinds, I'm okay with that.
What's our confidence level on this jam?
Uh, for me, a hundred percent.
I take that sixty percent.
Right or wrong, I'm doing it a hundred percent of the time, so.
Okay, well, what if I told you guys that this is not a high frequency jam at all?
I would have to believe you since you looked at it.
I don't believe you.
You don't believe me, Peter.
It's not fun if you know all the answers.
Either, either.
Yeah, Wizards broke.
Is it?
Looky there, looky there, looky there.
Twenty-five bigs, what position?
Low jack.
Maybe low jack's a position early, if you go to hijack it, I'm sure it's a thing, but.
Uh, never, never jams on our ranges either, pure call.
That's what I'm saying.
Ace queen doesn't pure jam either, mostly, but it has some three bets.
I looked at it, that was like the snap jam, easy spot. And then I'm, I'm reviewing hands today, and I'm like, how is this not a jam? Yeah, so it's not a jam. You jam with ace queen and ace king. Cause you don't want him, you want to beat some of them.
You want to beat heads.
Yeah, you want to beat some hands.
Uh, bet one or two. Oh wait, this is, this is, what is this pot, there's a.
Raise call.
I'll raise call.
Uh, check.
I would bet, man.
I would bet as well, we can.
Yeah, I think we gotta bet, just small though, right?
Yeah, I would not be betting big.
Yeah, you don't want to get check raised here. It's a three bet pot, like he's, or it's a raised pot.
So, he shouldn't have many tens, he's floating. Ten of spades, type hands, I think we got a better guy.
Now.
He's floating ace high wheels, stuff like that, it might not a bet.
In game, I think sometimes I'll bet small to medium to check the river, but checking's probably the GTO play here.
Yeah, I'm betting.
Want to check the flop, it's gonna check the turn.
Your check. Check.
Yeah, show it down, easy life. Ace queen, how did he not like punish us pre-flop?
He did, he raised.
Oh, it wasn't a limp raise, I thought it was a limp raise for some reason.
Uh.
Don't mind me, this is close, this is like the line. Suited cards, call.
Easy.
This is a good check raise.
This is a, a good lead, no?
I don't know.
I, I would check, I would play check raise.
It is.
We're two, the board's too dependent upon the ace, like, he's gonna have a lot of ace six, so there's like. He's got easy continues.
And the twos reduce our leading range a lot, cause we just don't defend the offsuit two, so we're, we're, three is as much.
You can, I think you're gonna have a mixed frequency between check and some leads here. I think, uh, I like playing, I like playing.
If we lead, it's gonna be big, right?
Now, small.
You could probably play call, just because we have a really weak king. Um, I would play check call, I'm bluff catching here.
Or block bet.
You got top pair, it's not a great block bet.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Alright. First the button, um, this is gonna be a high frequency call, I think, it may rip some.
Uh, I would have been done.
Yep.
With a flop like that.
We buy table four.
Oh, look at that guy, look at that guy.
I would've gotten that time.
Alright, so verse cutoff, I think this is too strong, I play call here a lot.
Yeah.
Jams, micro frequencies. Uh, I'm just gonna let it go, I guess.
Calling.
Yeah, this is our second best unpaired hand that's gonna want to call, but it's pretty low EV.
And pray for a check, check.
Uh, now you can. Get to lose two more chips there before you give up.
Suited connectors, I'm calling.
Free bet. Uh, first low jack, this might have some three betting in it, but I think it's mostly call.
Uh.
You guys are crazy, man, you got suited cards and you're forty deep.
It's true. We're on the dummy end.
Uh.
Now it's time to get spicy.
To fold.
I don't think we fold, but we call, I think we just call, oh, it, it goes raise.
I'm surprised it's raising on a ten paired board, because he has all suit tens. That's why I wanted to fold.
Nice.
You might raise this some, I'm playing call here, though.
I don't think this really ever raises much, oh, it raises more than what.
Joey, would I lead you astray? Man, you might raise this, this honestly, Louis, you're not at a line here, this might raise.
And a spade, backdoor spade.
Yeah.
You got three to straight, three to a flush, backdoor flush blocker, like.
Made hand.
Yep, it's a call. Or chip, sorry. You can't fold, you picked it back, but it's.
You can never fold.
He, he polarizes though, right?
So what?
Well, we got a pair, we check, he's gotta, he's supposed to bet a lot when we check, raise, check.
He polarizes, but we block the flush and we block the straights with the jack in this, like, we're blocking so much of his bluffs.
So you can make your life easy, if you're playing check raise with combos like this ever, and you pick up pairs. And you're folding, you should never be check raising these.
Yeah, I'm not.
I have to call here on this river, because we have the spade. Without the spade, I think it's a snack call. The ten is not so good as well with black ace ten, like, uh. No, yeah.
He shouldn't be doing this with ten x.
He's got suited wheels and stuff, though, I think, like, this could be ace five of spades, or.
Right.
Well, ace, ace high, he would probably check on the river, right?
Versa, no, but versus the lead right there, like Louis gave him like a little lead.
Yeah. A little pop, pop quiz to finish.
Pop quiz.
Yeah.
Okay, we're sixty deep now, so, oh, it's a squeeze, you're not gonna squeeze this combo, it's too wide, you just call.
Ooh, happy days.
You're calling.
Ooh.
You're folding, fold, I know you picked up equity.
You, you're getting priced in, you're priced in.
You need a ten spade.
Fifteen big blinds and a call from half of his stack.
We're only gonna win.
Dead in the water here.
We have twenty-three percent equity, so we have to put in a lot of chips, so I think it's gotta be a fold, right?
I'm folding this.
Need to win fifty-one chips.
Yeah, but. You know, you, you're sort of multi-way pot, you go overfold.
You have nine.
That's not enough.
So we could be going dead with the flush, right?
Yeah, exactly.
When we, they say that ten saves us, maybe a king saves us, maybe a three saves us.
Oh, the equity's close.
Eight, eighteen, eighteen potential outs.
Could be drawing down with a straight.
With implied odds, we gotta call, oh, we got a pair, I didn't even see that, yeah, we gotta call.
Yeah.
Dude, there's no way I'm calling this.
So I thought it was close, that's bad, I made the call, I'm not confident about this call, but then we have so much equity here, right?
Yeah, you got implied odds, like you're getting the direct odds, and you have implied odds on top of that, so.
Alright, you're gonna, you've intrigued, well, I can't, damn it, so, somebody should, Ken, do you have a table open? You should HRC this, oh, we can HRC it, nevermind.
It's on the turn, this is, I don't, I, I, I.
But see, if you look at the, uh, you need twenty-three percent equity, right? You're, you, you, so you got the implied odds.
Right. Then this too, I talked to in the, in the Discord, he'll run this in simple three ways.
You should, you should definitely, because.
Name is I prefer not to, E Y E, all one word, I prefer not to.
Okay, I will do that.
Problem is you won't have the, I mean, it's good to run, I love it, uh, we won't get the answer probably till tomorrow.
Well, I mean, honestly, Ken, though, it's like, we can either sit here and like shoot shit back at each other and act like we know what the answer is, but we don't.
Right, I love it, that's why I said I love it, we just have to wait for the answer, I mean, it's just simple three ways, uh, tour.
Yeah, like, loo- look, like. Yeah, honestly, when you're, when that guy's calling, like, some of our outs are blocked here, I, I just, I'm never calling this turn.
Yeah. I honestly don't know what's the right play, but I think we should try to put it in DTO and next time.
Yeah, something like that, I think would be good.
It's pretty close.
I, I don't disagree, I think it's close. I just think like, the, the button is committed to this pot, the guy's not folding. And like, you know. What, what are we, what are we hoping for?
Well, that's what drives up our implied odds, if he's not folding, then we're certainly gonna get, get the rest of the chips in when we hit our hand, that makes it better.
So like, so, okay, so like, if you have a guy that goes raises, and then there's an all-in and two calls. Are you like pricing yourself in with a hand like ace king, because of the implied odds? I mean, you've got, you've got, you've got good implied odds, and you have a really strong hand at that point.
But the chips are already in, so you can't make any more chips, then it would just be direct odds. But here we have, we are barely, like, we're barely getting the direct odds, it was a little bit weighted towards fold. By one percent. But then if you pile on the implied odds on top of that, I think it makes it, uh, uh, like, if you know you're gonna get all the rest of the chips in, on the river, then it's, you gotta call, I think.
Yeah, because the pot's so loaded, like, the stacked pot ratio is less than one, so when you make your straight, uh, your flush or your trip threes. Uh, they're not going to be able to fold.
But our odds, it doesn't have to be our, uh, outs.
So the king clearly isn't always gonna be a clean out, because there's probably gonna be some combo draws with straight draws involved, where the king doesn't really help us much, but then he had pocket kings to boot.
I mean, like, you gotta, you gotta remove paired spades. You gotta remove like, some of like your straight outs are probably like not clean.
Well, the straight outs also chop sometimes, too, right? Like, you're never gonna know what that is.
Right.
Right, like a three, a three may, you may be dead in the water with a three. Like, there, there's a lot of nastiness.
Could be dead with the spade, yeah.
And our flush outs are also not completely true. Because there, we could run into the ace, of course. Or not too nitty, if, because it's three way.
I would've followed it in game, but when I saw, like, looking at this, you see the pot odds, and that's the only thing that made me wanna continue, I didn't realize we were that. Close to getting the direct odds.
If you're thinking of it, that sometimes we're gonna run into the ace of spades, we're also gonna run into queen high spades, jack high spades, ten high spades, nine high spades. We're gonna get paid more by lower spades than we're gonna run into the ace of spades there.
You gotta find one where like, you gotta look at the, see, you need to find one where the low card is the odd suit out. Because i- it's gonna change it drastically if you have top pair and a flush draw, right?
I'm more a lot deeper, aren't we? We were like a hundred.
Just look at like fifty effect, if you, if you can find something, that would be good.
That's gonna change the implied odds drastically, though, because we still had a shit ton of chips behind when we made that call on the turn. And that's what makes spices it up.
What kind of board? Because we don't have much boards here.
Yeah, I know, um. So like, you could look at maybe a board like ace, seven, eight, and kind of finagle some stuff with bottom pair and a flush draw.
Yeah, but we don't have more cards. We don't have the over, over card.
It's also the connectedness of the straights as well, right? Like, we need a board that has a straight draw on.
Yeah, so the thing is, like. Are we really banking on a king being good here at any frequency?
At some frequency, yes.
Love.
I wouldn't say high, but I would not say it's zero.
I would say negligibly after the guy bets polar on the turn and gets a call, but maybe I'm wrong.
The, the king isn't gonna be the thing that wins us the pot, it's gonna be a three, it's gonna be a flush, or it's gonna be a straight.
Right, so that, that being said, Pete. That means, that's why you can look, you don't care about your overcard at that point, so you can look at like ace, eight, seven.
Well, the king, the king gives us two pair. So I think.
But it completes trades as well.
The straight for the opponents here a lot.
So this one, we could look at the hand like. Uh, at ten, five.
Or jack five.
Ten, five or jack five, yeah.
Yeah, maybe so.
Yeah, it's gonna be tough, though, because like, the, the straight isn't gonna be quite so nutty. Right, like our king high, our king high flush. Is the second best flush, which is an element of not running into a better flush. Much more, much more prevalent than, uh, than this year.
Uh-huh.
There is some merit to that, you'd have to still look at like king five or something, like, you need to have a high flush. It wants to raise those.
Here, it's a raise pure with this type of hands.
On the flop?
On the flop.
When it goes bet call, I guess it's the function.
But my opponent bets half pot, this, and the sim only adds two. You see what I mean?
Yes.
Right, so that's gonna change the, it's gonna change it a bit, right?
It's gonna change the whole, whole thing, yeah.
Although this is better keeping the, our chips like the SPR lower, so we will have more chips on the turn.
So the ace five has frequencies like of calling here a little bit, it looks.
I don't see any green here. See what I mean? There's no calls with the five X with the flush draw.
Well, what's that little bit of frequency that pops in on the upper end? Like, it's like a gray.
Not in range. Not in range.
Not in range, you're right, that's it. Yeah, I don't know, like, honestly, like, this is a good, simple three-way spot, and I think it has a lot of merit in looking at it.
Yeah.
I can also send it to, uh, to Joe, Mr. Batterman, he would run it.
Okay, and then let's look at the DTO, but maybe we could look at, uh, forty big blind. Maybe we're gonna have more.
You might find some magic there.
We need like a queen.
We got queen jack four. That's two time now. They're all two time, aren't they?
What about this ace ten, ace ten three, and you could look at like, queen three suited? See what I'm saying?
You don't like queen jack four with the king four?
I mean, I, I'm just throwing it out there, like, pick whatever you want, I'm just saying that one would be pretty close to.
Queen jack four with the, uh.
It's the top pair, though, like, you can't, if you have top pair and a flush draw, it's a completely different situation.
Well, we don't have top pair, we could have queen four, right?
Yeah, with, with queen jack four, if we have king four, we have the overcard, the flush draw, and the.
But it still allows him to have pocket kings, which are beating.
Okay, so how are you gonna have the front door flush draw when there's the four of hearts on the board?
Hmm.
Yeah.
That's why I was saying ace ten, whatever.
Right. See, another thing with the ace ten is, then that takes out him having pocket aces and pocket kings as an overpair. Which he showed up with.
Well, I mean, we're obviously not gonna have like a great.
Jack three doos. Uh, no.
Same story, you need the bottom card or the middle card.
The high and the middle to be the same suit.
Oh, yeah, so jack, jack eight, seven.
Yeah.
Jack eight, seven's okay, like, this has some completed equity, but I think it's still gonna be somewhat representative. So what would you have like, you could have like king seven here, I guess?
Queen seven?
Probably queen seven, because you're gonna turn the straight draw.
The problem is, it's gonna put a four-liner out there, but.
Well, it seems to be a pattern, right? Here as well, it's raising most of the. Bottom pair and a flush draw, it's raising.
Bottom pair, flush draw, and, and over, especially.
First two ranges, yeah.
Without, yeah, without the note, like, yeah.
Yeah, like, you're just gonna be, uh, you're just gonna be really ahead of one guy, and really drawing against another with high equity, so.
So this is a spot where I should raise.
In game, this looks like a raise.
Alright.
And then what happens when apparently the guy with kings jams, raised, call off, right?
I guess, you guess you gotta call it, Ken, like, it's not like a great spot, but I think you gotta call.
Alright, well, it's been a fun session, everybody. Make sure if you're watching on YouTube to like and subscribe, we almost have, check this out, almost. Five hundred likes on YouTube.
You mean subscribers?
Uh, subscribers, yes. Four hundred and eighty-seven. I don't think I ever subscribed to your channel yet. Jesus, Joey, Joey.
Joey.
I, I don't watch on YouTube, I didn't even think about that.
I don't think I have either.
Oh my gosh.
So it's YouTube.com.
Two to do, then we're five.
I get, I'm gonna go do that right now.
I'm subscribed.
Who's gonna be lucky number five hundred?
I don't know.
I'm already a subscriber.
Where do you win?
Nothing.
You win, nothing.
Alright, so happy days, see you guys around.